Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to council in September. Where did the summer go? This is the twenty eighth meeting of the one hundred and forty second Council, the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas, and we thank you all for being here tonight. So the first thing we have disclosures of interest. Seeing none? Madam Clerk minutes.
Your worship, I have a motion that the minutes of the meetings held on August the eighth, two thousand and twenty-two be confirmed. Moved by Counselor Peters, seconded by Counselor Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Council will now resolve itself into committee of the whole to deal with the following business. First item under the first committee, which is strategic direction and development, is the application for a temporary removal of part lock control. I would have a motion that report PD forty-seven twenty-two relating to the application by Novi Construction Limited for temporary removal of part lock control for parts one to four on Plan eleven R one oh nine oh two be received for information. And further that the application relating to the passing of a bylaw to temporarily remove part lock control for those parts on Plan eleven R one oh nine oh two be approved and further the council authorize staff to prepare a bylaw pursuant to section fifty sub seven of the Planning Act, which provides that subsection fifty sub, sorry, section fifty sub five of the Planning Act relating to part lock control does not apply to parts one to four on Plan eleven R one oh nine oh two. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Rymel.
Questions, your comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Next item relates to an assumption bylaw for Orchard Park South subdivision phase three. I have motion that report ES fifty-seven twenty-two relating to Orchard Park South subdivision phase three assumption bylaw be received for information. And further, the council direct that a bylaw be prepared for the city to assume Orchard Park South subdivision phase three thirty-four T one six five oh three from Spring Water Developments Incorporated. Moved by Counselor Herbert, seconded by Counselor Baldwin Sands.
Questions, your comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Last item on the agenda under this committee relates to two applications to the Committee of Adjustment relating to the property at eighty-five Alexandria Avenue. The first is for a consent to sever, leaving lots of twelve point one meters of frontage on each particular lot. Both lots will continue to be used for residential purposes. The second is an application for a minor variance to permit a semi-detached dwelling with a height of eleven point five meters, whereas the maximum permitted under the bylaw is eleven and to permit uncovered steps one point eight meters high and projecting one point nine meters into the front yard. Whereas the bylaw permits uncovered steps to project up to one point five meters with the into a front yard and no higher than one point two five meters above grade. Unless there are any further items from the members under this committee or worship. We'll now move into community engagement and services. First item relates to the Jumbo Monument Update. I have a motion that report PR fifteen twenty-two relating to the Jumbo Monument Update be received for information. Moved by Counselor Burgess, seconded by Counselor Kohler.
Questions, your comments? Counselor Rymel, it's been so long, I almost forgot your name.
I, I, all I had a question was, it says the repairs will be funded by the Jumbo Restoration Reserve, and I just wondered how much money's in that reserve.
Mister Treasurer?
I was hoping that question would. I believe it's. I don't know off the top of my head, it's in the area of fifty thousand, I believe.
Thanks.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
The next item relates to the two thousand and twenty-two Optimist Club Santa Claus Parade. I have a motion that report ES sixty twenty-two relating to the parade be received for information. And further, the council approved the temporary closing of First Avenue from the north side of Talbot Street to the south side of Verdant Street from three P M to nine P M. The east northbound lane to be available for emergency vehicles. And Talbot Street from the east side of First Avenue to the east side of Williams Street from six P M to nine P M on Saturday, November the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And further, that access for vehicles be maintained at all times through throughout the closures. And further, that parking be restricted between between five P M and nine thirty P M on both sides of the roadways along the parade route. Moved by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor Wookiee.
Questions, your comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Your worship, unless there are any further items from the members for this committee?
Counselor Baldwin Sands, and then Counselor Peters and Counselor Rymel.
Thank you so very much. In the interim, I've, when we haven't been together, I've received a couple of questions about the status of the pickleball courts and the resurfacing. I was hoping that Mister Bray would be able to provide the public with an update on what's happening with the Pennefore Park pickleball courts, please.
Mister Bray?
Thank you, Mayor Preston, through you to Counselor Baldwin Sands. The tender's been released. It closes on September fourteenth. And we're hopeful, weather permitting, it'll at least begin this year. It's temperature sensitive, the material they're putting down, so we want to make sure we have a good job, so it could be finished in the spring, once it warms up above fifty degrees. Thank you.
Counselor Peters?
Well, thanks, your worship. I just wanted to comment on Counselor Rymel regarding the Jumbo Monument. I've just found, I had asked Dan that question about a year, two years ago. And there is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the Jumbo Reserve. And the bulk of the money came from an estate of a lady by the name of Frances McCall. I'd never heard of that, but anyway, so there's adequate funds. Just thought I'd help you out there, Dan.
I, I just took a second to look it up. It's around a hundred and seventy-seven thousand in there.
Right, Counselor Rymel?
Yeah, I don't, I don't expect an answer tonight. I just, I just want to bring this up. This is an outstanding thing, and I wanted to know if it's still outstanding. It was back in April of two thousand and seventeen that Elgin Chrysler had asked for twenty-five parking spots at the Timken area, and we had allowed it for a year. And then a year later, they were still there. And then in January of two thousand and nineteen, we gave them six more months. And then the pandemic and everything come, so I'm just not sure, is that still an outstanding issue? Are they still using twenty-five spots? I just, I just never, wasn't sure if that had gotten wrapped up.
Mister Bray, can you help us with that?
Thank you, Mayor Preston, through you to Counselor Rymel. That agreement is informal. I think it's expired, but there's, we're still honoring it. And they're not using more than, because I was looking at it last winter, and the, they're not using more than, I think it's the twenty-five, twenty spots. And we also were in contact with them to let them know if we have a tournament. As you know, sometimes parking is an issue there, so they will remove their trucks. It's something we have to formalize again.
Just, just to make sure that, you know, like, they're not on an ongoing basis, just think that that's their, they have twenty-five spots all the time. Because this has been five years now, like, you know, they were supposed to look at increasing their space or whatever. But anyways, just you don't want, you know, people taking pieces of city parking, and then all of a sudden, it's, it becomes a precedent, because we've let one group do it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Herbert? Thank you, your worship. Thanks, Jeff. I think you mentioned in August that the park beside the library was being tendered or something. And I just wonder how that was coming along.
That's hope for tender now, and the closing date escapes me. I think it's in two weeks.
But will something start this year? Is that something in the spring?
I've, it's, again, I've put in a provision for more, a lot of the concrete. I put in provisions for winter heat and calcium. So we're hopeful that things will start happening this year. That's what's in the contract with that spring completion.
Thank you.
Counselor Wookiee?
Thank you very much, your worship. Two things under this committee. Number one, I'd like to thank the Parks Department for their, the lighting project on the Willstap Trail. And I'm getting a lot of positive feedback about that. And so, thank you very much. I thought it's, it's appropriate lighting, and my hope is should council decide in the next capital budget, we can extend that up to Wellington Street. Again, notwithstanding the lighting, the lighting policy, but this is a commuter trail that's well used. So that's number one. So thank you very much, Jeff, to you and your team. Secondly, what I'd like to find out, if I could get a report, and this might, I don't know whether this is my clerk's office. I'd just like to get some information regarding fireworks policies in neighboring communities, and maybe that information is already at hand. But I would just like to know what's going on, because again, in the weekend, there were some fireworks going off, and of course, everybody's dog freaks out, and, and I just, I would just like to get a handle on what other communities are doing. A constituent expressed their concerns, and I don't want to be a downer on celebrations, but there, of course, is a collateral cost to pay for everything, and I'd just like to know where we are relative to our, our peers. Thank you.
Great, and I recognize that London's doing a large study right now, both fireworks too, so we can include that in there too. And Counselor Wookiee, thank you for bringing up the lighting on the trails. That, you're, you're right, I've had a number of contacts and calls about just that piece, so. And I tell them every time, it wouldn't have happened if Steve Wookiee hadn't pushed it, so. Further questions or comments? Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, your worship. This would probably be for Justin, I would think. We live at the top of the Fingal Hill, obviously, in the intersection at the, down at the main thing has been closed for four or five, almost six days. Is there arrangement for fire service to come up that hill? How, how would the fire department get to our area in Monroe Street if there was a fire up there? If there is pre-arrangement with somebody, so I see Dave Gregory's on the call too, but anyway.
Oh, yeah, through your worship to Counselor Herbert, yeah, so when we have those types of situations, we do reach out to the fire department, and if they need to, they can do share a service kind of a thing where they can, so we can look after the top of Fingal line. But right now, we are trying to at least keep access through the intersection, so emergency services can get through if there's ever if there's ever an emergency on top of Fingal line there.
Is that arranged ahead of time to have?
We, we, for the previous.
I had a neighbor ask me, and I said.
So like, whenever we do that, we, we, in active conversation with the fire department when we have these types of things, so.
So we're well covered.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else under this committee? Seeing none?
We'll now move into infrastructure and civic operations. First item relates to the two thousand and twenty-two Capitol Program Status Update. I have a motion that report ES fifty-nine twenty-one relating to the two thousand and twenty-two Capitol Program Status Update be received for information. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Rymel.
Questions, your comments? Counselor Baldwin Sands?
Thank you. First, I would like to thank and congratulate the staff for this excellent report. There's very little that hasn't been done, and there's very little that is not going to be accomplished underneath the direction that council has given, and it's gone above and beyond. So first and foremost, I'd like to say thank you. On the, one of the projects that was listed on this plan doesn't give the credit to the active transportation ties that fit into our strategic plan and the complete streets. I was hoping that Mister Lawrence would make a comment on that, please, and then I have a couple of other questions. Thank you.
Great. Mister Lawrence?
Thanks. So active transportation through the Complete Streets program, we look at as many sidewalks and bike paths as we can add to existing situations. So all of the projects, we consider upgrading as much as we can, and, and the concept is to make it a road corridor usable for all modes of travel. And so it's a really positive social impact that we can create in, in all of these projects every time we see a reconstruction.
Thank you, and it fits in nicely with our strategic plan, so I thank you very much for that attitude that you've taken with these projects. The next one is on the odor control that's been happening. Can we talk a little bit about that?
Lawrence, odor control.
Odor control, yes. So as like a general status update, council will recall, we combined the odor control project with the plant optimization study. So that's, that's the, the contract where we're trying to get more sewage through the plant at peak times by removing bottlenecks. So we combined two batches, two projects and two batches of funding into one. It's, it's nearing the end of its detailed design now. We're likely to tender and, and start over the winter. So it is a type of construction that would, would in theory could go all year long. So it's, it's, it's coming along nicely, but there's, you know, there'll still be tendering and then about a year of construction.
Thank you, and my last question is, in the last paragraph, it talks about the underground pipe networks. And how is that going to help save or reduce waste or save money in the long run?
Yeah, so replacing pipes has a number of benefits. The, the nicest one being it gets better water quality. There's, there's, of course, a better fire protection when we replace water mains, and in terms of leakage, there's less leakage, so by having less water leak, it, it saves all the users money. So lining and replacing sanitary storm and water main have multiple points of, of return on investment.
Okay. Further questions on this report? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? It's carried.
Your worship, unless there are any further items from the members under infrastructure. I will now move into corporate governance and administration. First item relates to the two thousand and twenty-one development charges. I have motion that reports TR twelve twenty-two relating to two thousand and twenty-one development charges be received for information. Moved by Counselor Burgess, seconded by Counselor Rymel.
Questions, your comments on the development charges? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item relates to the two thousand and twenty-one council remuneration report. I have a motion that report TR thirteen twenty-one relating to the two thousand and twenty-one council remuneration be received for information. Moved by Counselor Peters, seconded by Counselor Burgess.
Questions, your comments? Seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next report relates to the two thousand and twenty-one annual report for building permit fees. I have a motion that reports TR fourteen twenty-two relating to, to the two thousand and twenty-one annual report for building permit fees be received for information. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Burgess.
Questions, your comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Your worship, next item is a two thousand and twenty-two municipal election update from myself. First of all, I would like to mention that for any municipal electors, that your name must be on the voter's list in order to vote. Please check the city's website, www.stthomas.ca to see whether you are on the list. If you are not, then you will need to print out a form, or you can pick one up in the clerk's department to add your name to the voter's list. And then come election day, sorry, not come election day, but towards the end of September, you will receive a voter information letter, and it'll explain how to vote. It'll, it'll provide you with a PIN so that you can access both the voting website and the telephone voting site. If I could just mention that in order to make sure that our voters' list is as up to date as possible, the clerk's department has sent out, sent out mailers as well as letters to residents of high-density buildings in a number of complexes, as well as some of the city-owned housing, providing general information about the municipal election. Eligible electors can vote anytime during the voting period, which is October the eleventh at ten A M to October the twenty-fourth at eight P M. Anyone who does not have a telephone or access to the internet and needs assistance can come to one of the mobile voter help centers at various locations in the city and can vote using an iPad locate, located within one of these centers. It, it's a mix of daytime, weekend, and evening hours. There's five locations. Elgin Center, Locke School, Senior Center, and the library. The library will be open from ten till eight on voting day. At the other locations, there will be limited hours. So for example, at Elgin Center on both Saturday, October the fifteenth and the twenty-second, voting will take place from twelve till four. At the Senior Center, it will be open from twelve till four. And at the Locke School, it'll be open from four till eight. All this information is available on the city's website and will be advertised in the St. Thomas Times Journal later this week. And of course, anyone wishing to ask any further questions can contact customer service or the clerk's department at customerservice@stthomas.ca or the City Hall number six three one one six eight zero, extension zero. Thank you, your worship.
Madam Clerk, if I could, if I could add, on each of the, the special places where we have people that can come and use our equipment to vote, they will still need to bring their, their voter identification that they've received to their address.
Thank you, your worship. They will need to bring their voter identification, as well as the voter information letter that they would have received through the mail, as they will be needing that PIN to sign in onto the iPad. For those individuals that are still not on the voter's list when they attend at one of these mobile help centers, we will have both a laptop and a printer so that we can access our voter's list, add people to the list, and then print them off a voter information letter onsite.
Perfect. Counselor Herbert, and then Counselor Clark.
Thank you, your worship. This is just a question I've had asked, how do I know I'm on the voter's list, or how do I get on it? If I bought a new house and I've lived there for three years, and I pay taxes, and I, am I automatically on the voter's list, or do I have to apply to get on the voter's list?
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you for the question, Counselor Herbert. There is no automatic impact. The Municipal Property Assessment Corporation does the best that it can to ensure that we have as much information on the voter's list as is possible. And of course, we try and make sure that there, if there's any discrepancies, if there are any new street names, we've already gone into adding any new street names for new subdivisions, any apartment buildings. So all people need to do at this stage is either call, and we will check, or if they want to look on the city's website, there's a very small box, you put in your name, your date of birth, and your address. And the question will go to our voter's list, basically electronically, am I on the voter's list? If the answer is yes, then that's terrific. If the answer is no, then there is an application form they can print off right off the website, or they can come in and fill it out.
Thank you. That's a great piece of information to get out there. Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, your worship, through you to the clerk. Some people were asking whether or not there would be staff there to assist them.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you. I neglected to say so. Yes, there will be two staff at each of the voting places. Perhaps at the library, we may add a third staff member towards the end of the day. There will be two staff, and there will be two iPads available.
Okay. Further questions? Counselor Baldwin Sands, did I see you? No, okay. My peripheral, just don't, I don't know if it was up or not. Thanks. Any other questions for the clerk? Thank you for sharing that. Let's all of us be sharing that also with, with the electorate. Next topic?
Your worship, unless there are any further items from the members for this committee?
Counselor Wookiee?
Thank you very much, your worship. You know, over the summer, we didn't meet much, so we have lots of time to think about things, and my mind's a very busy place, and what I've been reflecting on is that, this is, I want, this is really to staff, this is not to us, to say, when we're looking at, say, subdivision plans, and the developer says this is what they would like, I would like us to have a, an equal voice to express what we like. What I mean by that is, in the new settlement area, and you're going to hear me talk, you've heard me talk about this, I'll talk about it some more. And any, in any planned area where there are natural heritage features abutting it, what I want to make sure is that we plan so that there, should Kettle Creek ever be okay with it, or should things change, or other, our connections with other municipalities close by, that we can have a system for people to have trails and active and all that kind of stuff. What I'm trying to say, I'm hoping this, I want to express this to the planning staff, the environmental services staff, and Parks, Rec and Property to say, you know, we, we support you, we want you to be brave, and if you've got a vision for something, like, hopefully, like, I think if I feel the vibe of council, we would support you that for healthy, active, social living, even though it might be a little bit outside the box, or it might not be what has been done in the past. Because I really want us to be able to protect access to natural heritage features, and we have an opportunity now as we're going forward with the new settlement areas. So that is just more to staff than anybody else to say, I'm confident we would support you for you to express your vision of urban planning in St. Thomas. That's all. Thank you.
Further comments? Seeing none?
Your worship, if there's no further items, council will now reconvene into regular session. I have a motion that the recommendations, directions, and actions of council and committee of the whole as recorded in the minutes of this date be confirmed, ratified, and adopted. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
We'll now move into reports of committees. The only committee report this evening relates to Art Trees and Trails Project. I have a motion that report STPAC O two twenty-two relating to the Art Trees and Trails Project be received for information. And further, the council approved the acquisition and installation of several art trees and trails displays throughout St. Thomas as set out in report STPAC O two twenty-two, and further that the art trees and trails pieces be included as part of the city's public art inventory. Moved by Counselor Rymel, seconded by Counselor Baldwin Sands.
Questions, your comments? Counselor Baldwin Sands?
Thank you. I read this report with great interest, and I was hoping that we could get some highlights from the acting chair.
Counselor Wookiee?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor Baldwin Sands. I, I love this, aside from the fact that I'm on the committee, I love this project because it's bringing art to the people, and it's the intersection of, like, art and nature. If you've been out to Spring Water Conservation Area, they have some of them out there, and what's happening here is these are placed, they're not permanent, so anybody's listing what happens, the state goes forty-eight inches in the ground, it can be changed when we need to, and it's, it's fully funded, and it's graffiti resistant, and any kind of, any repair costs are included in the budget and will not come out of the city budget. And I'm very excited about this because I love running into art. For instance, I was riding my bike, I saw, I saw the, the city manager one day, I was on the elevated park, went beyond that, and beyond that, there's just, you're riding your bike along, and there's a, a piece of art there with an explanation, and I think it's a wonderful way to get the general public who might not step in an art gallery to see art and say, I'm gonna stop and read that and see what that's all about. So that's what this project is about, and, and hopefully, we'll see more of it around the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Not a question, just a comment, and as Chair of Catfish Creek Conservation Authority, where Spring Water is, I would like to thank you for that, because we receive a lot of very nice compliments about the artwork displayed around the entire Spring Water Conservation Area.
Thanks, your worship. Looking forward to these, the Kettle Creek Conservation Authority's also utilized the same funds, and there's some beautiful Clark McDougall images out there as a result of it. But speaking of seeing art, I was just wondering if you could, it's not really related to this report, but explain to me the mirrors that have been installed beside the old Royal Bank in the alleyway. You know anything about that one?
I can comfortably say I know nothing. I can comfortably say I know nothing.
Okay. Thank you, Sergeant Schultz.
My understanding was part of a mural project, but it has a reflective piece to it. The mirrors were put there to.
Well, I just, I, I've heard anecdotally that one of the mirrors may be broken, and I'm just concerned that, I'm hoping that it was special glass that was used.
City manager, do you have the answer on the?
Mirror glass? I, I do not. I'll say it differently, but we will find out and get back to council.
Great.
Thank you, Worship. I noticed some of the names I recognize as local artists for this, this round of art. Are they all local artists, or how were the, how were the artists chosen?
Councilor Wookiee, I'm going to keep referring to you on this.
Thank you very much. This was, that is a decision made by the folks at the center. So that's Laura knows way more, Laura Warpe knows way more about it, and I think that her and Sherry, I think, would go through it. We didn't review the actual pieces. We leave it up to the, the art community to make that decision. Thank you.
Councilor Kohler? Thanks, Your Worship. I just want to add to this. I think things like this are great, not only just for the people that live in St. Thomas, but when you look at the roundabout statues, the, the art gallery, or the art that we're putting on the murals and, and all of that, what's happening, and it's hard to measure, but the, the tourism aspect to it and what it's doing for the local economy, it, it's, it's great. And I think the more that we can do things like this will help benefit us, the city in whole.
Further questions under this committee? Or on this report? Seeing none?
Your worship, we now move into petitions and communications. There are two this evening. The first one is a copy of a resolution addressed to the Minister of Health and Deputy Premier, and that's been received from the town of Elmer regarding funding for the development of warming and cooling center responses. And the second one is, notice that application has been made to the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario from Halibut House Fish and Chips for liquor license for its indoor and outdoor areas at ten twenty five Talbot Street. Council may make representation to the commission concerning the application. Your worship, unless there are any further items from the members, we can now move into unfinished business. Nothing on the agenda at this time, unless there are any items from the members. Your worship, seeing none, we'll now move into new business for council.
I have, I have one reminding that the September eleventh overnight, the morning hours of about four forty five till seven, there's a power outage in our community, almost citywide. It's not quite, but also taking in areas around us. This was the, both Integris and Ontario Hydro, an upgrade piece, and it means, some people are going to be waking up late for church on Sunday if their alarm has been set on their electronic clock, but it is a early morning hours of September eleventh. And we're trying to remind as many people as possible that that's the case, and it's happening hopefully while most people sleep. And so it won't really affect refrigerators and, and the like. Some of our, we've, our police, our hospital, our industries have all been informed and all are aware of what time and how it will happen. But we wanted to make sure that the people at home also knew. Anything else under new business? Seeing nothing.
We'll now move into bylaws. I have a motion that lead be granted to bring in the bylaws. Moved by Councilor Wookiee, seconded by Councilor Rymel.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
I have a motion by Councilor Wookiee, seconded by Councilor Rymel, that bylaws be now read a first time, referred to council and committee in the whole, and read a second time.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
First bylaw, please.
First bylaw is a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the sixth day of September two thousand twenty two.
Questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor? Posed, carried. Second bylaw, please.
Second bylaw is a bylaw to amend bylaw forty five dash eighty nine, being a bylaw to revise and consolidate certain bylaws regarding traffic and parking of motor vehicles. This relates to community safety zones at Peachtree Boulevard and Raven Avenue.
Questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor? Posed, carried. Third and final bylaw, please.
Third bylaw is a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city and Patriot Properties, Inc. This relates to a land use agreement adjacent to the L N P S trail.
Questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor? Posed, carried. Worship, I, I rise and report successful passing of three bylaws.
Great.
I have motion by Councilor Wookiee, seconded by Councilor Rymel, that, sorry, I've got the wrong one there. Go off script here. The report of council and committee in the whole on the three bylaws be confirmed, ratified, and adopted.
Great. Questions or comments? Seeing then, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Your worship, no public notices or notices motion for this evening. There is a need to move into closed session. At this time, I have a motion that this meeting be closed to deal with a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land, commercial or financial information supplied in confidence to the municipality, which if disclosed, could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group of persons, or organization, and a personal matter about identifiable individuals. Moved by Councilor Herbert, seconded by Councilor Baldwin Sands.
Before we vote, Councilor Kohler, did you have something?
Thanks, Your Worship. I'm just wondering if we could add an item to the closed session, and if, if not, if the notice isn't enough maybe for the next closed session regarding a discussion around our service request delivering response. And I think it should be enclosed, because the discussion could identify some individuals.
Well, let's try it enclosed and see if we can get it. If not, we will put it onto a future agenda. So on the closed session, moving into closed session, reminding the people at home, we'll be going into closed session now, and the council meeting will end. When we're done with the closed session, we'll simply come out of closed, long enough to adjourn this meeting for today, and we'll see you all next week. So all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie. Thank you.